I'd like to call the Monday, February 6, 2003, Oakwood City Council Meeting to Order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the repulsive religion stand, one nation, our God, and the people, liberty, justice for all.
Have a roll call, please, Lori.
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Hilton.
Here.
Mrs. Turbin.
Here.
And do we have a report on our minutes of our January 9 regular session and work session and our January 23 work session and executive session? Councilmember Hilton.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I have reviewed the minutes from all four of those meetings, and I found them to be correct and complete, and I move that we adopt them as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Members of City Council, honored guests, city staff, and citizens of Oakwood, on behalf of Oakwood City Council, it is my honor to proclaim that Oakwood, with its population of 9,572 residents, continues to be the premier residential community in the Dayton region. We have this distinction because of our beautiful neighborhoods, our excellent public schools and library, unmatched city services, including public safety, public works, recreation, and leisure, but most of all because of our citizens. We have outstanding diversity in housing choices. Although most of our housing stock is over 75 years old, our homes and properties are better maintained than any other city around, and our home values prove it. Whether a classic Tudor, a Georgian Revival, an American Foursquare, or an Italian Renaissance, in 2022, 95% of Oakwood home values were higher than the county appraised value. Oakwood is the proud home to five sites listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Hawthorne Hill, which also holds the special distinction of a national historic landmark, was the home of Orville Wright from 1914 until his death in 1948. Dayton history and the Oakwood Historical Society conduct regular educational tours of the home and the surrounding historical district. The long Romspert homestead on Far Hills was the home to three generations of the same family from circa 1863 to 1985, when it was bequeathed to the Oakwood Historical Society to serve as their headquarters and house museum. The entire Shant's Park Historic District in Oakwood was added to the registry for its exceptional and intact collection of mid-century and late Victorian-era homes. The familiar Queen Anne-style double home on East Shant's Avenue was built by Adam Shant's Sr. in 1895. In addition, Wright Memorial Library was added to the National Register in 2013. Everyone knows Oakwood has great schools, in fact, the finest public schools in the region. This has been the case for decades, and the tradition continues. I know this is hard to believe, but the Oakwood High School Academic Decathlon Team won the Division III National Championship for the 10th year in a row. This scholastic competition is unique because the team is tested in art, social science, economics, language and literature, mathematics, music and science, and participates in judged events in speech, interview, and essay. Congratulations to all the students and Advisor Lori Morris, who is in her 17th year as coach. She deserves major kudos for her efforts on behalf of our students. Oakwood High School is the first public high school in the Dayton region to have a virtual dissection table. The Anatomage Table, as commonly known, makes it possible to visualize and interact with the virtual anatomy in a way people would on a living human body. As the Oakwood Register described this addition, "The days of the traditional frog dissection are over." This is an incredible learning tool, made possible with a grant from the Oakwood Schools' Foundation. We congratulate and thank Todd Dewell for his 11 years of service on the Oakwood Board of Education, and thank outgoing Superintendent Kyle Ramey for his outstanding leadership of our school district. Wright Memorial Public Library celebrated its 83rd anniversary. Under the leadership of Director Kristi Hale, they are one of the most heavily-used libraries in the county, and in 2022, they were named Partner of the Year by the Greater Dayton Partners for the Environment, in recognition of the library's environmental programs and native community gardens. They also completed a $5.1 million renovation and restoration of their beautiful Tudor architectural building. A substantial portion of this renovation came from private philanthropy. The primary purpose of local government is to provide for public safety, refuse services, water and sewer services, and other governmental and infrastructure services. We also have the obligation to create a community ambiance that encourages citizens to want to live in our fine community. Formed in 1927, our Public Safety Department is the second-oldest consolidated department in the United States. It is unique because all our officers are cross-trained and state-certified in law enforcement, firefighting, and emergency medical services. Our first officer on scene response time, for any emergency, is under three minutes, by far the fastest in the region. Our fire engine response time is 4.4 minutes; the national standard is six minutes. Our medic response time is 3.3 minutes; the national standard is 12 minutes. Oakwood has the lowest crime rate and fire loss in Montgomery County. Under the leadership of Oakwood Public Safety Chief Allen Hill, we have the best group of public safety officers in our history. Captain Mike Jones retired after 25 years in public safety and received the Oakwood Rotary Community Service Award. We were able to promote from within our organization, promoting Officer Justin Sloan to lieutenant and promoting Lieutenant Mike Tanner to captain. Lieutenant Chuck Bellage was recognized for more than 20 years of service with the Kettering Regional SWAT team. He was the first non-Kettering officer to serve on the SWAT team and has received commendations from the Federal Bureau of Investigation and other law enforcement organizations for his assistance with federal and multi-state investigations. We offered our fifth annual Citizens Police Academy. Chief Hill describes the program as "a unique opportunity for citizens to better understand the job of a public safety officer and serve as a way for safety department personnel to hear the needs and expectations of the community." Public Works is often overlooked in our city, as most people take these services for granted. They should not. Our Public Works employees handle our weekly household waste collection and disposal, our comprehensive recycling program, special pickup program, year-round yard debris pickup, a dumpster program, fall leaf pickup, and a spring mulch delivery program. They also provide routine repair of our asphalt and concrete streets and alleys, provide snow and ice removal, and maintain our traffic signals and street signs. Public Works also operates our water system, sanitary sewers, and storm sewers. They are on-call 24/7 for storm events, snow events, and water main and other broken-pipe events. Please thank them for their service to our city. Where else will you find in a community of 2.2 square miles the parks, gardens, and green space found in Oakwood? We offer four neighborhood parks: Cook Park, Ferage Park, Orchardly Park, and Schaefer Park. Our natural areas include Loy Gardens, Elizabeth Gardens, Houck Stream, and Centennial Park. Our recreation facilities include the Oakwood Community Center and Gardener Pool, the Dog Park at Krieger Field, Irving Field, Hollinger Memorial Tennis Center, Old River Sports Complex, and Mack Hummond Stadium. Oakwood also features beautiful public gardens, including Smith Gardens, donated to our city 49 years ago, and Francine's Gardens. We have been a Tree City USA for 40 years, as designated by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and have planted over 3,200 trees through our Johnny Appleseed Street Tree Planting Program. We also sponsor numerous community events, including the New Resident Breakfast, the Ice Cream Social, the Family Fall Festival, and the Holiday of Lights. We celebrated several notable anniversaries last year. CareWalk celebrated its 20th and final fundraiser for breast health of women in Dayton. They raised over $300,000 over their 20-year run for breast cancer research. The Oakwood Register celebrated its 30th anniversary. Ashley's Pastry Shop, the best bakery in the Miami Valley, celebrated their 40th anniversary. Oakwood and La Vizane, France, celebrated the 50th anniversary of our twinning with our first sister city. The Oakwood Club, the best-known steakhouse in the Miami Valley, celebrated their 60th anniversary. And in 2023, Dorothy Lane Market, the best grocery store in the Miami Valley, will celebrate their 75th anniversary. We also commemorated the 150th anniversary of the plating of the town of Oakwood with a historical marker placed in front of our city building. We mourn the loss of former city manager Michael Kelly. Mike served our city for over 33 years, including nine years as city manager. He was the consummate professional in every sense of the word. He will always be remembered for his dedication to the betterment of Oakwood and is a man of the highest integrity. His grace and class are the primary reason I chose to become involved in public service. Mary Jo Scouzo passed away on Christmas Day 2021, and we celebrated her life last June. She retired from Oakwood City Schools in 2013 as a superintendent after 41 years in public and non-public education, including 21 years with the Oakwood City School District. It was my honor in 2013 to present her with the first Key to the City Award for her career of service to our community. Under the leadership of City Council, our outstanding city staff, and the advice and counsel of our 32-member Citizen Budget Review Committee, we met the challenges to our financial stability. Our revenues exceeded our expenses in both 2021 and 2022. This year, as well as in 2022, we plan no increase in income tax, property tax, or refuse water, sanitary sewer, or stormwater fees. In fact, our water rates are now the second-lowest of any jurisdiction in the region. We plan to have a property tax renewal on the ballot this November. This levy generates about $1.1 million annually for city services and was last renewed by our voters with a 70% yes vote in 2018. And as you know, only 8% of your property taxes go for city services. The remainder goes to Oakwood Schools, Montgomery County Agencies, and Wright Library. The 2023 budget includes $2.2 million for the Far Hills Storm Sewer Reconstruction Project and $220,000 for the Far Hills Resurfacing Project in 2024. The Far Hills Storm Sewer Reconstruction Project will be the third-largest project that the city has completed in the past 30 years. Maintaining our city infrastructure, both above and below ground, is a top priority of City Council and city staff. The Ohio Municipal League serves as the primary connection point between municipal state government in Ohio, representing the interests of cities and villages to lawmakers and the governor's administration. We support their 2023-2024 legislative priorities as follows: Restore local government fund, preserve home rule, protect public safety funding, invest in public infrastructure, and partner to fight opioid addiction. The excellent services provided by our Public Safety, Leisure Services, and Public Works Departments would not occur if not for the leadership of city manager Norbert Klopsch. He is recognized throughout the region as an outstanding city manager. He has served our city for 31 years, including the last 21 years as our city manager. He is blessed with an outstanding group of department directors. As I begin my 20th year on Oakwood City Council and my 14th year as your mayor, I serve our region as a member of the Board of Directors of the Greater Dayton Mayors and Managers Association. I formerly served as the president of the association. I also serve on the Montgomery County Solid Waste Advisory Committee and the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee. I am honored to serve with my fellow members of council. Steve Byington begins his 16th year as a member of Oakwood City Council and his 14th year as our vice mayor. Steve represents our city on the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission and the First Suburbs Consortium. Councilmembers Rob Stevens and Ann Hilton both begin their 14th year on City Council. Rob represents our city on the Miami Valley Communications Council and currently serves as the Chair of MVCC. Ann is our city liaison to the Oakwood Sister City Association. Councilmember Lee Turbin begins her third year on Oakwood City Council. Lee is our city liaison to the Oakwood Historical Society and represented our city in La Vizane, France, last June for our 50th anniversary of our twinning with our first sister city. What a great team. This council, like those that preceded it, operates in a collegial style, and everyone believes in doing the right thing for the citizens of Oakwood. We listen to one another, no one has hidden agendas, and we believe in community service. When I joined City Council in 2003, it was my belief that Oakwood was well-governed, well-managed, and financially strong. I still hold that belief and will continue this tradition. With the help of City Council, city staff, and the citizens of Oakwood, we will continue to be well-governed, well-managed, and financially strong. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve you. (Crosstalk). Comes out of my pocket. Thank you, thank you. Work on the thinning of the city of the mayor. All right. Next, under Status Reports, we have some city committee assignments, appointments, I'm sorry. And we have several members to reappoint. Megan Cavanall to our Budget Review Committee, Michael Hayes to the Budget Review Committee, Greg Lotterbach to our Planning Commission, Alex Heckman to the Property Maintenance Board, and Peter Davies to the Beautification Committee. We also have two new appointments. We have Jim Vaughn to the Budget Review Committee, and we have Raya Whalen to the Budget Review Committee. So at this time, I would like to make a motion that we appoint these citizens to our Citizens Committee and would ask for a second.
A second.
Is there any other questions or comments? All in favor of that, of these appointments and reappointments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. That concludes our Status Reports. We have several visitors here in the audience and wanted to know, this is our visitor portion. If any of you wish to address council at this time, this would be your time to come down and address council. Okay, cat's got your tongue. Come on down. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Andrea White, and my address is 4744 Bouquet Drive, Kettering, Ohio. I actually live in Kettering, but I serve as the state representative over Oakwood. I want to congratulate all of you, your staff, and everyone on a day-in-and-day-out basis for all the great work you are doing, and the state of the city is a great example of that. And so I just wanted to remind people, we have a new district this year. It's District 36. So if any citizen would like to contact us, so we can work in partnership with what some of your goals and ideas and challenges are, or if you need help accessing services, you can reach out to our office at rep36@ohiohouse.gov. That's rep36@ohiohouse.gov, and our phone number is 614-644-6008. And I can get that for anyone, but we want to be available, and if you have ideas or challenges, we're happy to try to connect you to the right answers and get things moving. So congratulations to the city of Oakwood, and it's an honor to represent its citizens.
Thank you very much, and we do appreciate your service on our behalf at the State House. Any others, people wish to address council at this time? All right, then we will close the visitors' section of our meeting, and we will go straight to legislation, and Councilmember Stevens has a resolution.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. Resolution of consent authorizing the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, to proceed with the replacement of certain guardrail assemblies along Far Hills Avenue, otherwise known as State Route 48. This is a resolution that involves improvements along Far Hills Avenue. ODOT is planning to replace numerous guardrails along state highways in Montgomery, Miami, and Clark Counties. Far Hills is within the project area, and ODOT is seeking the city's consent to replace guardrails. ODOT's guardrail project is being planned for 2024, but will be separate from the repaving project also scheduled for 2024. The guardrail project will be financed 100% by the state with no local funding component. This resolution documents the city's consent to ODOT to proceed with the guardrail project and authorizes the city manager to sign contracts in connection with the project. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, any questions or comments for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton.
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin.
Yes.
Thank you, and I believe Councilmember Stevens has a second resolution.
Yes, a resolution authorizing the city's cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, in connection with the 2024 resurfacing of Far Hills Avenue, otherwise known as State Route 48. The entire length of Far Hills Avenue within Oakwood is scheduled to be repaved in 2024. Since Far Hills is a state highway, projects like this require cooperation and cost-sharing between the city and the Ohio Department of Transportation. This resolution is the first legislative step of the project. It documents the city's intent to cooperate with ODOT on the project and authorizes the city manager to sign engineering and other contracts in connection with the project. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton.
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation. We now have a staff report from Chief Allen Hill on public safety in Oakwood. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. My biannual update here for first part of 2023. I'm going to talk a little bit about our 2022 crime stats, EMS trends, fire trends. Did have a personnel change in dispatch, a little bit about our in-service training program, the Citizens Police Academy that will be hosting again this year in September. Late in the fall, we acquired a replacement medic 27. And I want to talk a little bit about our school partnership, or our partnership with the school district, particularly on a day like today, when they announced the new superintendent, Dr. Gupta, I believe is how you pronounce his last name, who will start on August 1st. Our Part 1 in our major crimes, in the previous years, we've had some really, really good crime stats. They've been really, really low numbers. We were much busier in 2022, but we still have some of the lowest crime rates in the region. But, and I've said this before, it only really takes one or two individuals for us to have a significant increase in crime stats over the course of the year. As you can see, for our Part 1 crimes in 2021, we were at 85, and last year we were at 143. We had a pretty significant increase in larcenies. I'm going to talk a little bit about auto thefts, but you can see our auto thefts increased from 2 to 20, which makes up a big percentage of that number. We also had a lot more assaults, which is not something we talk about often here within the community. We had seven assaults last year, where we typically have maybe one or two. Juvenile fights, domestic situations where they're not husband-and-wife or living situations, their boyfriend and girlfriend, and those kinds of incidents are classified as an assault. The other thing on other major crimes, I just want to point out, we saw an uptick last year as well in the identity thefts, the identity fraud complaints again. We went from 13 to 23 in previous years. That number's been as high as in the 40s. So as we get into tax season and things like that, just ask everybody to be very mindful of that, because of last year, we did see an uptick in those reported offenses. So if you look at our graph, as I said, we had a very active last year in comparison to the previous years. But with that said, I think we continue to have one of the safest communities in the entire state, and the safest community in the region, and some very low overall crime numbers, although last year, like I said, we were much more active than previous years. The same trend goes with our reported burglaries last year. I celebrated 2019 as our banner year. It was zero, and I said, "We only have one way to go from here," and unfortunately, over the last few years, we have gone up. But when you think about our Oakwood density of 3,900 residential units, single-family or multi-dwelling units, and a 2.2 square miles, and seven burglaries for the entire year last year, percentage-wise, it's still a very, very low number. Thefts, auto thefts, account for more than two-thirds, about two-thirds of our increase from last year. You know, overall thefts, two major things that we're seeing, not only thefts of auto vehicles themselves, but thefts from motor vehicles. People leaving valuables in the car when they're unlocked, it's a crime of opportunity. Individuals are walking down the street, they open a car door, they grab a backpack, a computer, a purse, or what have you. So it's just a reminder to remove all your valuables from your car, particularly your keys, too, and make sure you're locking your car door. Because of where we're at right now for a region, is, it's not stopping or slowing down. This is an article from middle January in the Dayton Daily News, where the city of Dayton responded to 60 car thefts in one week. As the major said in his quote, "It's a vicious and frustrating cycle." We're feeling that here locally as well. As I said, in 2022, we had 20 vehicle thefts. In January, we had seven alone. So we're almost at, we're at 35% of what our total number was from last year in one month. We had six in a week. In almost every instance, the vehicle was unlocked and the keys were inside the vehicle. If you leave your car unlocked and the keys inside the vehicle and are re- If you leave your car unlocked and the keys inside the vehicle in our region with what we're seeing now, there is a chance when you walk out in the morning, your car won't be there. Doesn't matter what community in, Oakwood, Kettering, Centerville, Dayton, Huber Heights, Inglewood, Trotwood, wherever you go, we're seeing it across the region. Lot of juveniles involved in this. You know, it's gotten plenty of coverage, but there's, on the media, but there's other individuals involved in this as well. And, you know, where the vehicles are going, ultimately, who knows with the amount of them that are being stolen? We usually have a very, very high recovery rate, and we've recovered several. But our recovery rate in comparison is down. So the vehicles are leaving our area, we believe, and where do they ultimately end up? Who knows? Use of force incidents. We had five total use of force incidents last year. I think our numbers are very consistent, or have been very consistent for the last several years. I mean, I highlight this when you think about how many citizen contacts, whether it's self-initiated, citizen-generated, calls for service generated that we have in a year. And to look at these numbers and say, with regards to use of force, you know, you're talking five use of force incidents out of 25,000 contacts that we have with citizens throughout the year. Statistically, a very, very, very low percentage, and I think that's just a testament to the professionalism of the men and women who are working for the organization. Traffic statistics. We did have, we saw a significant increase last year, or decrease, decrease, in traffic accidents. We went from 151 to 121. But if you see, our injuries were up last year, over 100%. But if you look at our type of crashes and the number of accidents, assured clear distances, and failure to controls, and failure to yields. So one of the point of emphasis that we will make in our traffic enforcement is looking for those accident-causing violations. Because although we were, previous years up there as well, although we've had higher years of overall accidents, really the injuries, when I look at this page, the number of injuries in our crashes is higher than what it's been in any of the previous five years. So we're going to focus on those failure to yield, failure to control, and assured clear distance, accident-causing violations. Hopefully, next year, we can reduce that significantly. Traffic, overall traffic citations, post, we're pretty consistent with regards to numbers post-pandemic, but obviously, we're not at the level that we were back in 2018 and 19. Medic runs. We had 467 medic runs last year, which is the second most in our last five years. We had 375 of those were removals, and we responded 41 times to neighboring communities on mutual aid request. Last year, how many times did we contact another fire department to respond to Oakwood to handle a medic call for us? And the answer for 2021 is one. When I talk about that second unit, that second medic unit here later on that we replaced, Medic 27, having that unit allows us to keep this number almost to zeros each and every year, which means we're able, anytime somebody picks up the phone and calls 911 in the city of Oakwood, we're able to respond and handle our own emergencies, and it's because we have that second medic unit. In this particular incident, we were actually already on a medic call when we received a secondary call, and we didn't have the in-house personnel to man the second ambulance, so we had to call a neighboring fire department. Fire runs, fire runs were way down last year in comparison. We only had 79 total fire runs, but we did have damage involving four of them for a total of $112,000. Our fire loss is very, very low in comparison, and the reason is, is we do respond, as the mayor indicated in his state-of-city address, we have a very quick response time, and we're able to keep things to content fires versus structure fires. We respond on the scene very quickly, whether that's the first arriving public safety officer in a police cruiser with a fire extinguisher, or our engine arriving on the scene. And we're able to keep, we're able to keep our total fire loss very, you know, very low and minimal. We had a significant garage fire this past year. Guys remember seeing the pictures, if council members remember seeing the pictures of it, but that makes up the vast majority of our loss for last year. Our response time, as indicated, our average fire engines on the scene in 4.2 minutes. The national standard is 6, and now the first arriving cruiser is on the scene of any emergency in 2.25 minutes. That's our benchmark. We like to advertise, we'll respond to any emergency, two minutes or less, and we strive very, very hard to achieve that goal every single year. Personnel changes. We just hired a new dispatcher. Dispatcher Rob Plummer started last month on January 23rd. He comes to Oakwood with a tremendous amount of public safety dispatching experience. He worked for the Warren County Sheriff's Office for 14 years, and he most recently was a supervisor in the dispatching section with the Kettering Health Network. Our departing dispatcher was Cheryl Colton. Cheryl has been with us since July of 2009. She actually had over 22-plus years of total dispatching experience. She came to us from the city of Dayton, but her husband was a captain with a local fire department. He reached eligibility for retirement, and he decided to retire, and they're embarking on the next chapter of their life. So we wish Cheryl and her husband all the best in their adventures to come. They had a plan, and so they're off and running with it. In-service training program. This continues to be a point of emphasis for us every year, not only for the state mandated training, but just the self-initiated department training. Over the past five years, the safety department has averaged 3,603 hours of in-service training annually for a department. When you think a department of a total of 34 personnel, it's over 100 hours of training annually per year. And when you equate that to a 40-hour work employee of working 2,080 hours a year, it's almost two full years of time that we spend training annually. We accomplish training from a variety of platforms, online continuing education, classroom setting, practical setting, exercises. And there's our breakdown. Last year, as with previous years, the vast majority of our hours are on the police side, although we spend a considerable amount of time on fire and EMS hours because we have continuing EMS requirements for both of those as well. The most significant, I guess, portion of our in-service police training in 2022 was the state of Ohio mandated 24 hours for all public safety officers, or police officers in the state of Ohio, and these were the topics that some of those trainings covered. Cultural humility, diversity, inclusion, and equity, responding to a mental health crisis, legal updates, officer personal wellness, responding to sexual assaults, and domestic violence. As you mentioned, Mayor, on November 9th, we graduated what is our fifth Citizens Police Academy. Their picture's there in the middle. And we look forward to the sixth academy, which will start in September. So if anybody's out there has any interest, it is free of charge. It's open to any individual who actually works or lives in the city of Oakwood. The department is appreciative of the community's support of this program, and it's a tremendous way for us to interact with community members. As we sit right now, even though we haven't officially advertised for it, I believe the academy is two-thirds full. So you can go to our website, oakwoodohio.gov. You can print off an application, and you can send it in if you want, and if you have interest in being part of this year's academy. As I mentioned, in October of 2022, we purchased a replacement medic. Our existing at that time, Medic 27, was in 1996, and it finally experienced, although it was in very good aesthetic-looking condition and mechanical condition, it had a brake failure with its ABS brake module that could not be repaired. So therefore, it wasn't safe to use for emergency services. So as a result of that, we quickly and got very fortunate to locate this particular unit out of Pennsylvania. It's a 2017 with about 45,000 miles on it. We put it in service in the middle of November, and this reserve, it actually serves as our primary unit. It is very, very good condition, and a unit like this should service us for another 10 to 15 years. So it was a very, very good find for us, and it's a very, very nice unit. So thank you for your support, and I appreciate us being able to jump on this and acquire this unit pretty quickly. The last thing, as I mentioned in the beginning, is Dr. Gupta was announced today as the new superintendent, and I read his comments, and one of the things he mentioned in there was safety and security of the schools, which I'm sure is important for all superintendents to whatever community they work in or they're going to. You know, the Oakwood Public Safety Department and the Oakwood School District has had a long, long partnership. It's a collaborative partnership that we've had because the focus has always been on the safety of the schools and the students, particularly getting them to and from school and why they're at school. But these are just some of the things that this partnership includes. Annually, the administrators from both the safety department and the school districts sit down, and we have a meeting, talk about any concerns, issues, upcoming things for the school year, bounce ideas off one another. Daily school zone enforcement is an emphasis for our department. Very rarely, probably, particularly in the morning, that you're at Harmon Smith or driving Far Hills that you don't see a patrol vehicle. We're actively in the Far Hills school zone, both in the morning, during the lunch hour, and in the afternoon. We conduct daily foot patrols inside all three schools, hopefully multiple foot patrols inside all three schools. We have direct access to and ability to monitor the school security camera systems from our dispatch center. I know when we have the third graders come in every year for the government, and they walk into dispatch, they're always amazed that they get to see their school on the screen and us monitoring. So in the event of emergency, it's obviously, it could be a valuable asset to us to be able to monitor what's going on in a school and provide information real time. We have a longstanding DARE program. I believe it's year 27 or 28 now, and I talked about it at our Christmas employee luncheon one year. You know, in 2020, Officer Whitaker, who's our DARE officer, it was in March when the schools shut down, and basically, her DARE program shut down. And Harmon was in the middle of DARE, and when they went back, that DARE, that fifth grade class would have been the first class in 25 years to not receive the DARE program, and Officer Whitaker took it. Nobody knew what Google Meets was then. It was all new. So she took it upon herself to find an alternative platform to teach remotely, weekly, through Google Meets when schools started to go back in session to finish that. So I mean, it's pretty prideful of that program and the organization for the last 27, 28 years. Every fifth grade class that's gone through the Oakwood schools have had the DARE program. We do other educational programs as well for various grades, whether it's initiated by us or it's something that the school, particularly pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, those kinds of classes. And the last thing is, is that you see us a lot at the home football and basketball games, and that's because we provide security services for all home football, varsity, and basketball games. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for the chief?
Yes, Chief Hill, thank you for everything you do. Excellent. Can you think of why? I mean, I know, I am completely baffled about the stolen vehicles and why people leave their keys in the car. Do they share a car with somebody, or, I mean, what is the? I get leaving your front door unlocked. You and I had a conversation when somebody walked in my house, and I apologize profusely, but you know, you've got your kid coming home from school, and he's bringing a buddy, and you're upstairs, but I just don't get that. Do you?
Complacency. And I'll just say, people feel, the citizens of the community and the people that visit the community feel very safe here.
Okay.
And a lot of it has to do with a lot of the things that the mayor talked about in this city address. And I think it's just, a lot of it's complacency. It's, yes, we hear about auto thefts happening, but they don't happen here. And it's one of those kinds of things, but it's an easy crime of opportunity. And when the criminals are successful over and over, and they're not working very hard for their proceeds, they will return over and over until they're run off for caught. And I think that's it. It's just, it's complacency because many of us travel, regardless of whether it's business or for work, and you're going to a new area in a new environment. You're staying in a hotel, an Airbnb, a VRBO, or wherever you're at. You wouldn't think to leave valuables in the car because you're not at home. And in that, it's a break-in cycle in that complacency. But I think a lot of the residents and the people that visit here, they're just very complacent, and they feel very safe here, which is a great thing. But obviously, when we have issues like this, we need to make sure that we're removing valuables, locking car doors, not leaving keys in the car.
Yeah, it's the keys in the car that I just can't get, I just don't get that. But I really appreciate, I know you've put out press releases and the Oakwood scene, so.
We're just trying to get, we think we have the ability within the community just by public education to reducing this a lot. It's just getting the word out there that we are seeing an alarming number of vehicles being stolen in our community. Lock your car, remove your keys from your car, and your chances of your vehicle getting stolen, particularly, you know, the old days of hot-wiring a car. People aren't stealing cars. They're, they are by definition a law, but they're opening a car door, they're sitting in it, pressing the start button, and they're driving off with it. You know, they're not forcing their way by popping a window and hot-wiring a car. So if we can just get the keys out of the car, I think our vehicle thefts go way down.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then you mentioned the state mandated training. I didn't catch all the topics. I think there were six. Are some newer than others? Have some been added recently?
This year, they just announced that there's going to be another mandatory 12 hours of training, or 24 hours of training this year, but they're only mandating eight hours as mandatory topics, and we will fill in internally the other topics as well. Where last year, all of the training hours were mandated by the state. This year, they gave us a little bit of discretion within each organization, but there'll be eight mandated topics.
Okay. Well, what are the newest ones they've added?
Legal updates.
Okay.
More crisis intervention, officer wellness training.
Oh, okay.
We see, I don't want to say we see a lot of the same topics year after year, but they build on one another. And, you know, when we deal with mental health crisis training, this is something we've been doing within the organization for the last several years. And legal updates is just continuing and ongoing.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Yep. Just following up on the keys in the cars. Were there any instances where it was because of the cold where somebody was out?
Where the car was already running and somebody, no.
No, they were all just.
Yep, they were, cars were basically just unlocked with the keys left in it. And I'll highlight one case. There was a car unlocked with the keys in it, and the keys to the second vehicle as well. So the individuals decide to come back the next night with the set of keys and steal the second car in the driveway. And also, with your residential key, the key to your house, doesn't do you any good to lock your house if you're going to leave the key to the house in the unlocked car. So it's just something to think about as well.
Then one other point I wanted to make is, you mentioned that the medic has 45,000 miles. Do we know how many miles were on the previous? Because that might sound like a lot, but, you know, we had a vehicle that was 2000, or 96, you said?
96.
How many miles did that have?
Right at 50,000.
Right, so over the course of 20-something years, we only put 20,000 miles on.
Correct, and that's why when I said, even though it's 2017 with 44,000 miles on it, this will serve us for years and years to come. Because as the years go on, the average miles per year will go way, way down, yeah.
And following up on that medic, the medic unit that we replaced, I know you said it was not safe to be driven. I know we were looking at some of. was not safe to be driven. I know we were looking at some alternate reuses for that for some other organization. Do we have any update on that?
Gov deals. We're, I don't, I can let.
Oh, okay.
We use Gov Deals, which is an online auction site. I don't know that we know specifically who purchased it, but we, we made a lot of very clear disclaimers as to the condition so that nobody was buying a pick.
But wasn't like it just went to a junkyard?
Correct. Or it could have been purchased by a junkyard for parts, don't know. But I think plumbers, they, they like medics because of all the compartments and the storage. But it was, it was a functional vehicle. It just had a, like I said, an irreparable brake issue that made it unsafe to drive for emergency driving.
Okay. And I know, as it relates to our, our relationship with the schools, one of the things that, that I wanted to make perfectly clear to the recruiters hiring our new superintendent, that, that the relationship between the city, the schools, and the library is really part of a three-legged stool, and I wanted to make sure that whomever, you know, became our next superintendent was aware of that and supported that concept. So I believe that that is in fact the case. And, and lastly, I would say that in addition to the third graders coming here to see their, their school on the dispatcher, they also really enjoy our temporary holding facility, AKA the jail.
Thank you.
And we put them in there. And why you let them out, I don't know, but that's, that's another story. Okay. Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. That concludes our staff report. We have a city manager report.
We do, Your Honor. Well, needless to say, our public safety department is in excellent hands, and we're very, very fortunate to have Chief Hill in charge, and he's obviously extremely passionate about the profession itself, but also Oakwood. And it shows every day. And, you know, we generally come to work Monday through Friday during the typical work hours, but a job like his is 24/7, year-round. And so thank you, Chief, for all you do. The last couple of meetings, I've talked about our prohibition about placing yard debris in the street, and obviously, this time of year, we don't have a lot of yard work taking place, so we don't have many people putting debris near the street for pickup. But we do have some, and I'm happy to report tonight that our code enforcement officer, Ethan Kroger, has found just a very small number so far of violations. And as of today, the, the folks that have been given the door hanger tag notice have complied and pulled the debris out of the street. So no one has yet been subject to the fee that we have in place. So, but I would encourage folks, as we, you know, work our way through the winter and get to that, you know, spruce up your yard period, to keep in mind this prohibition. And it's outlined again in the latest edition of the Oakwood Scene. Being a California kid, now I've lived in Ohio since 1989, since 1992 in, in Oakwood, this period that we're entering now is the gloomy time, because back home growing up, we'd be cutting grass by now, and, and, you know, radishes would be growing in the, in the yard and everything. But, Your Honor, you mentioned in your State of the City, the Public Works Department, and, you know, the, the month of February, February, March are particularly challenging for the, for the folks in that department. Obviously, the refuse collection becomes more challenging, particularly when the weather is very inclement. And, you know, last, late last week, we had a pretty significant water main break on Clarana, right near Dorothy Lane Market. And it took probably 12 hours plus for us to figure out exactly where the leak was, and dig through the, in this particular case, concrete street, and, you know, dig down four and a half feet to the pipe, figure out how to, how to deal with the break and make the repair, and then begin the process of restoring the roadway. And those folks are out there, again, in whatever weather they're dealt during that particular day. So kudos to, to the department for not only that, but all they do, particularly this time of year. The Far Hills Avenue project, you know, the biggie, and I can't, can't wait for it, is next spring, summer of '24, when we'll be repaving, we, in partnership with ODOT, the entire two miles of State Route 48 in Oakwood. That's a bit off now still, but we are very carefully planning the remainder of the infrastructure kind of work, both some above ground in terms of curb and wheelchair ramps and that sort of thing, but also some underground work that we'll be completing just in time for that repaving to occur. And our hope is that when that resurfacing is done, there won't be any cutting into the street for the foreseeable future. Now, we can't predict, again, an unforeseen water main break, but all of the stuff that we can plan for will be done, including importantly, the gas line work that you've all watched, we've all watched for many, many years. Our website is loaded with information about Oakwood. For those citizens who haven't been to the website lately, I would encourage them to go there and take a look. Kudos to Lori Stasiel for being our webmaster and keeping up with that on a daily basis. Almost, it's almost a regular occurrence daily when something is, is updated and renewed on there. And the, the big addition this week will be the 2023 budget. It's a very, as you know, a very large document, a lot of detail about the city, and by the end of the week, that'll be posted to our website. So thank you, Lori, for all you do with that. And that's all I have.
Any questions for our city manager? All right. Time for council comments. Councilmember Turbin.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I am pleased to announce the long-awaited return of that historical event right at home. The Oakwood Historical Society and Dayton History are partnering to do this again, and the date will be April 23rd. It's a Sunday, and it'll run from noon until 5:00. Not only will guests be able to tour the iconic home of Orville Catherine and their father Bishop Wright's home, there will be docents available to take them on a walking tour around the surrounding area. So they'll meet many, or they'll hear about many of the iconic illustrious industry giants that lived close to Orville. So we're looking forward to that. Tickets will go on sale on March 6th, and if you want more information, there will be an article in the Oakwood Scene. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton.
No comments, Your Honor.
Councilmember Stevens?
No comments this evening.
Vice Mayor Byington?
I just want to congratulate Dr. Gupta for being selected as the new Oakwood School District Superintendent. I also want to commend the Oakwood School District and the board, particularly for their selection. I will say that I was fortunate enough to be part of that interview process, where they got groups together of teachers, and students, and staff, and parents, and community stakeholders. I was talking with one of the groups that facilitated the interview process with all these different folks, and they said that Oakwood is truly unique in the way that they do this process, particularly in the number of people that they include in that, and get their input and their, their thoughts about it. I will say, meeting all three of the final candidates, how they made that selection, I have no idea. All of them were, were excellent. It was probably one of the hardest things that school board probably ever had to do, was to select the winner. So we are, we are in for a treat with this new superintendent, and I look forward to working with him.
Very good. And he starts like today, tomorrow, or soon?
I'm not sure exactly.
August, oh, August. Okay. So he'll start in August. I have no comments. I think I gave you all enough comments here when the meeting started. So our next regular session will be on Monday, March 6th, 2023. We are adjourned.